May 10, 2017, Antioch Unified School District. We just came back from closed session and I'd like to report out, we did take action. We appointed a principal of alternative education by the name of Colleen Sanchez.[18.14][18.14][applause] Effective for the 2017-2018 school year. The motion was made by Trustee Gibson-Grey and by protocol, and we don't have a unanimous vote. There were three yeses, Gibson-Grey, Trustee Hack, Trustee Rulig, and two nays, Trustee Vinson and Trustee Crystal White. So that's all we have to report out from that closed session. If we could take quorum again, please.
Good evening. Board Member Crystal Sawyer-White?
Present.
Board Member Gary Hack?
I'm here.
Board Member Diane Gibson-Grey?
Here.
Excuse me. Board Vice President Deborah Vincent?
Present.
Board President Walter Rulig?
Present. And before we move on, I just wanted to mention that it was requested from the superintendent that we move Item 8B, District Report Learner Advisory Committee, DILAC, from Item 8B to Item 8A because of some children here and at home that they might be wanting to take care of. So if nobody objects to moving--
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Yes?
Could you also announce that there's empty seats that people in the lobby can fill in?
Yes, that's right. There's, I see an empty seat right up front and maybe we have another one in the back. So there are some empty seats for those people out in the hallway wishing to sit. Flag salute. Trustee Gray, would you mind meeting us?
All rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could move approval of board minutes?
So moved.
So moved for the meetings of the Regular Board of Education of April 26th. Moved by Gibson, Trustee Gibson-Grey, seconded by Trustee Vinson. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries to approve the board minutes. We now move to item number five, Superintendent Reports.
Yes, I just want to say happy National Teacher Appreciation Day to all the teachers in the room and all the teachers in the district. We're so proud of the employees that we have here working to serve our children and we just recognized our classified employee of the year, Leann Hemforth, I hope I get that right?
Laura.
Laura Hemforth. And also J.C. Renpro is our teacher of the year and our runner-up Deb Hubbard. So really proud of the work that they do and the work that all of our employees do. So yay to them. And yesterday, what a wonderful event. Our first and second year teachers had their bits of colloquium, which is a celebration of their work throughout the year. They go through an induction program and they graduate, for lack of a better term, after two years. And just to see how far they've come in their journey and to listen to their stories is just really, really heartwarming. So congratulations to them. Just a reminder, tomorrow is the Youth Intervention Network Integration Celebration. There's a luncheon at Lone Tree Golf Course. I hope you can make it. And, oh sorry. And also middle school open house is tomorrow night. And then the following week, Thursday, is elementary open house. So looking forward to those evenings and hope you can join us.
Thank you. We now move to item number six, Student Delegate Reports. Who's going to be our first speaker?
If I--
Yes, Mr. Clark?
Yes, if I could just say Lucas from Alternative Education couldn't make it tonight and so I'm just going to hand out his paper after the young lady from Antioch High finishes.
Okay.
Good morning, Board of Education and members of the community. My name is Anna Murillo and I am here representing Antioch High School. Starting off with our student activities, as Antioch High School seniors prepare for our final weeks of school, yea, some senior activities have been taking place. First off, senior ball occurred last Friday, May 5th, at the Bentley Reserve in San Francisco. Really fun. The senior Disneyland field trip will also be happening next week. And on Sunday, June 4th, the baccarat, if I'm saying it right, for all graduates will take place at Holy Rosary as students are honored for a non-denominational service. Our graduation rehearsal will be on Thursday, June 8th at 4:00 PM and graduation will take place the next day, June 9th, at 8:00 PM. So hopefully you guys can join us. For student achievement awards took place on May 2nd when students received some awards for outstanding academic performance, including 71 Presidential Awards for seniors with a 3.5 GPA for seven semesters. I was lucky to receive one of those. Within these awards, Angelita Yarborough received the salutatorian award and Justin Hicks the valedictorian award. Last night, the financial scholarship awards took place for us, the seniors. And thanks to the Antioch Community Scholarship Fund, which awarded Antioch High School a total of $14,250. So thank you to everybody. Lastly, for academies and linked learning, graduating seniors are finishing up on their senior projects to showcase the academy celebrations, which will take place on Thursday, May 25th. Also, on May 25th, the Visual and Performing Arts Showcase, aka VAPA, is going to take place at Antioch High School from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And on Friday, May 19th, Antioch High School will be hosting its annual spring dance show in BD Auditorium at 7:00 PM. Hopefully you guys can be there. And just shout out to me, I got into UC Davis and I will be attending next fall. Thank you.[410.21][410.21][applause] Thank you. Yes. Thank you.
And I saw you got some money yesterday, last night.
I did.
Some scholarships.
Yes.
At Antioch High, that was great.
Thank you.
Congratulations. I think that's it on our speakers then and you handed out--
Yeah, we have the other seat.
The other one is coming around. We will now move then to item number seven, Public Comments. Individuals to address the board regarding items not on the agenda. As of this moment, I don't see anybody who's filled out a card for that. We do have people who wish to address the board regarding items on the agenda, but that will be at that appropriate time.
I believe there's Kimball students? You have a comment card?
I'll comment card for Kimball students. I didn't see it when I went through, but I'll look again. Are there some others?
It's on the small pile.
Over here. Okay. I'm sorry, there's another pile.
I separated them. Yes, I put--
Okay.
Separate piles.
Okay, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
So Sarah--
That's staff.
Staff, okay, I'm sorry.
That's the second half.
Okay. Sarah Nichols, staff. And we have one here. Okay, here we go. Yes, Kimball Elementary, students from Kimball Elementary, so I'm not sure who that would be, but if you want to come on up.
Speaking on Ocean Pollution Presentation.
My name is Yelena Rosco and this is Destiny, Katie, and Juliana. We're from the fifth grade at Kimball Elementary. We went to the Ocean Plastic Pollution Summit at Monterey Aquarium. Our project was to reduce the number of single-use water bottles.
Okay. Juliana? Shh. Go ahead, explain.
So each month, we went to each classroom in our school to do, we did a survey to see how many non-reusable water bottles were in each class. And we did an assembly with a PowerPoint to show how like the animals are getting hurt with the, for the plastic.
And we look at the pictures of what happens to the animals. Show them the pictures. So this is, tell them what happened. This is the animals that died because of our using single-use water bottles.
So this is the animals that like get hurt from the single-use water bottles and the plastic.
So now tell about the ground.
Well, when we, after we did the survey, our school dropped down 80% use of non-reusable water bottles.
And we went to Monterey Aquarium.
And we went to Monterey Aquarium to do--
And did a presentation with 100 schools from out the whole state. We did the whole state. So what are we going to do, girls? Where are you? Shh. Okay. Everyone is getting a water bottle to say Kimball Elementary loves the earth. And we want you all to start saving the world. Thank you. You're going to save the world.
I have my--
That's great. Thank you.
That's what they told the water bottles at school. That's what they told all the children. And it dramatically made a difference when they told the children that we were saving all the animals. You showed them. So now you can take the world. Your hands are small, but you can put your name on it.
Turn this way, ladies.
Take yours. But you have a little--
No, thank you. Someone else can have it. Someone else can have it. We're sharing.
And we're very proud of these students and all of our students that participated. But all of the fifth grades learned about ocean plastic pollution. We did writing and research and it was amazing. Amazing. Thank you.
You guys have 25 seconds.
So next year, next year, we're going to, we're going to continue the drive to save the world by changing the sport where we can take the plastic off. We're going to put a petition and doing all the proper things so that we don't have to use the straw, the napkin, and the plastic. And that's what the other--
And it'll save money.
And it'll save money for the school district and we'll save all these cute animals.
Great job.
Kids do make a difference.
Yeah, that's great.
Got mine.
Okay, if we have no other speaker cards on that item, then we move to staff comments, public comments. And Sarah Nichols, I believe, is the first. Sarah here?
Yes, Sarah Nichols.
Yes.
Okay. I just read Sarah.
You have a full three minutes, Sarah.
I don't know if I'll use it all this time. Okay, my name is Sarah Nichols. I'm a fourth grade teacher at Lone Tree Elementary. This is my fourth year there. We have a brand-new principal this year. Okay. We need a full-time VP. We need a full-time VP, Monday through Friday, full days. We have eight students at our school. We started off with four, a VP for four days. Then she was moved. We have a part-time retired VP, no, retired principal as our VP, Monday through Wednesday. And then Thursday, Friday, we have a different retired principal as our VP. Now we have a replacement for that VP. We need consistency. We need a full-time VP that is able to take on all those responsibilities, not in a substitute role because they don't take on all the responsibilities that a regular VP does. We have an enormous school and we need help. There's no consistency when we have an issue with a child on Thursday and Friday that that VP has to deal with. They are not aware of what happened on Monday with that child. It doesn't help with the lack of consistency. It doesn't build the community. There's no connection with the kids and that affects the performance of the kids. We have an SDC class that has had former Tobin World children in it. It's affected the entire school. We need support. The tremendous behavior of a few students doesn't just affect that teacher's class. We need the district's support to help our principal, to help our staff, so we can be effective in our classroom and in our school. We do not feel that we have been supported. I hope you hear us now. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Sarah--
Savakul.
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 Savakul. Speaking on landscaping.
Hi, good evening, Board, everybody in the community. Sarah Savakul, Antioch High School. I have to make a plug for star jasmine. It's awful. It exists in a couple places still on campus. It's allergy season. I have kids out all the time. They're, they can't see straight, their allergies are so bad. And then we have a couple plants left. None of the new landscaping, but if there can be some kind of policy district-wide about getting rid of it. It's so toxic. I know my mom can't be anywhere within 60 feet of it. She's highly allergic. Other kids walk past it. There's a couple patches of star jasmine. It should definitely be banned in the district. Kids already miss enough time with allergies. I can't imagine having a plant on campus that makes them react. I don't want the school to be a toxic place for them. We've banned, you know, anything else that's toxic. Star jasmine, you got, it could be dirt for all I care, just not the star jasmine. Got to make a plug and I'm not sure you guys can figure that out, how to get rid of it and what to replace it with and how to find it. Because I know it's, and I can only speak for Antioch High School, we've got a couple patches of it and it's miserable. So, in allergy season, thanks for your time and thanks for supporting students so they can stay in class and not cry and sneeze. It's very boogery. It's very boogery. Thank you.
Thank you.[997.23][997.23][applause] Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Interesting. Hmm. Okay. We now move to item eight, District Reports, and we voted to move 8B to 8A on DILAC, District English Learner Advisory Committee, report. Who will be speaking on that?
Yes, so we have Sylvia Ramirez, who is our wonderful EL coordinator, and she is going to do a report. And she's going to talk about our District English Learner Advisory Committee. And I believe there are handouts, but we will also do a PowerPoint. So with no further ado, Sylvia.
Thank you, Dr. Clark. Good evening, Board President Rulig, members of the Board, Superintendent Anello, and members of Cabinet. My name is Sylvia Ramirez and I am the District Coordinator overseeing English learners. I am here to introduce members of our District English Learner Advisory Committee as they speak before you this evening. Before I introduce them, I would like to say a few words about them. The DILAC members are leaders who have demonstrated leadership roles within their school's ELAC committee as well as in the community. This group has dedicated over 25 hours in meetings alone. This year, I have had the privilege of working alongside some of the most giving, passionate, collaborative, and eager parents in the Antioch Unified School District. Now, they are a bit nervous presenting to you tonight, but I want to explain to you that even with this anxiety, they are here and have made a strong commitment to advocate for our English learner students. Here are some statistics from our District English Learner demographics that I want to share with you. In 2016-17, there are 3,205 English learner students enrolled in our schools, about 18.3% of our student population. 1,832 students that are reclassified are enrolled currently. 282 students were reclassified this year alone. 392 students enrolled are initially fluent English proficient on the CELT test. And 5,462 students are enrolled that have a language other than English spoken at home. That's 30.2% of our population. And that is why we now have here present, Hilda Rios, who is the ELAC chairperson from Turner Elementary School. Adelina Ruiz, we have the ELAC chairperson from Orchard Park School. And Berlaine Leon from Mission Elementary and the ELAC chairperson there to present to you tonight.
Gracias, Sylvia. Buenas tardes, miembros del comité. Uno de los logros del ELAC este año fueron varias oportunidades de educación para padres que se enfocaron a los padres de los aprendices de inglés. Hubo una capacitación para los padres con el resumen del programa para aprendices del inglés.
Thank you, Sylvia. Good evening, Board members. One of the accomplishments for our DILAC this year was a number of parent education opportunities for the parents of English learners. There was a parent training with an overview of the English learner program.
Esto incluyó cómo preparar para una conferencia de padres y maestros, reclasificación y entornos instructivos para alumnos. También tuvimos capacitaciones para los diligentes del ELAC y del DILAC. Además, muchos padres de los aprendices de inglés participaron en el proyecto de alfabetización de la familia latina y capacitaciones en Lexia.
This included how to prepare for a parent-teacher conference, reclassification, and instructional settings for students. We also had training for ELAC and DILAC officers. In addition, many parents of English learners participated in the Latino Literacy Project and training on Lexia.
Este año se les invitó a los padres a que asistieran a la conferencia de Asociación de California para la educación bilingüe, CAVE, financiada con fondos del título 3. Desafortunadamente debido a que la conferencia se llevó a cabo en el sur de California, ninguno de los padres pudo asistir. El año próximo, CAVE se llevará a cabo en Sacramento y esperamos que los padres nuevamente puedan asistir. Esperamos que al menos uno de ustedes pueda asistir.
This year, parents were invited to attend the California Association of Bilingual Education Conference, sponsored with Title III funds. Unfortunately, since the conference was held in Southern California, none of the parents was able to attend. Next year, CAVE will be held in Sacramento and we hope parents are again able to attend. We hope at least one of you will be able to attend next year, too.
Otro logro importante para el DILAC es el constante aumento de comunicación entre padres, maestros, y administradores. Por medio de los miembros del DILAC que participaron en el comité de El Cap, asistentes de oficina bilingües en cada escuela y juntas de padres han habido más oportunidades para que los padres se comuniquen con el personal del distrito de Antioch.
Another accomplishment that is important to the DILAC is the continued increase in communication between parents, teachers, and administrators. Through the DILAC members participating in the El Cap Committee, bilingual office assistants at every school, and parent meetings, there have been more opportunities for parents to communicate with Antioch Unified staff.
Seguimos viendo que los intérpretes se emplean con más frecuencia en las capacitaciones para padres y en las juntas escolares.
We continue to see interpreters being used more consistently at parent trainings and school meetings.
La presidenta del DILAC y otros padres se reunieron con la administración del distrito varias veces durante el año.
The DILAC president and additional parents have met with district administration various times throughout the year.
El DILAC también ha seguido teniendo subcomités que se reúnen para hablar sobre temas específicos para aconsejar a la administración.
The DILAC has also continued to have subcommittees that meet on specific topics to advise the administration.
Nuestra coordinadora de servicios para aprendices de inglés, Sylvia Ramírez, asistió al menos a una junta del ELAC en cada plantele escolar. También apoyó a los planteles que tuvieron dificultad para establecer su ELAC. Ahora, la señora Adelina compartirá los otros dos logros más.
Now, Adelina will share two more accomplishments with you.
Buenas tardes. Este año hemos visto mayor participación del DILAC en la planeación e implementación del El Cap. Yo fui una de esas personas que participaron en estas juntas. Los miembros del DILAC han aumentado su participación en las juntas del comité del El Cap y también han conseguido más padres de aprendices de inglés que participen. Le han dado al distrito opiniones para priorizar acciones, pasos, y objetivos. La coordinadora que supervisa el El Cap asistió a más juntas del DILAC, lo cual nos dio aún más oportunidades para recibir actualizaciones y para dar opiniones.
This year, we have seen increased DILAC participation in the planning and implementation of the El Cap. DILAC members have increased their participation in the El Cap Committee meetings and have also recruited additional parents of English learners to participate. They have provided the district input in prioritizing action steps and goals. The coordinator overseeing the El Cap has attended more DILAC meetings, providing us even more opportunities to receive updates and to provide input.
Otro fascinante logro es la próxima celebración de reclasificación a nivel distrito, que se llevará a cabo el día 23 de mayo a las 6:00 de la tarde en el auditorio de la secundaria Antioch. Se les invitó a los alumnos que se reclasificaron durante el año escolar a asistir a una celebración de reconocimiento con sus padres. Tendremos entretenimiento musical y refrigerios. Tenemos invitaciones para todos ustedes y esperamos que puedan asistir.
Another exciting accomplishment is the upcoming district-wide reclassification celebration that will take place on May 23rd at 6:00 PM.
In Antioch?
Middle?
In the middle.
At Antioch Middle School. Students who have been reclassified during this school year have been invited to attend the recognition celebration along with their parents. We have an invitation for each of you and hope you will be able to attend.
Además de la celebración del distrito, muchos grupos del ELAC en los planteles patrocinaron sus propias celebraciones y reconocimientos de sus alumnos reclasificados.
In addition to the district celebration, many site ELAC groups have sponsored their own celebrations and recognitions of the reclassified students.
Ahora, la señora Berlaine les presentará las recomendaciones de nuestro grupo. Gracias.
Now, Berlaine will present our group recommendations. Thank you.
Gracias. Good evening. The DILAC members continue to work with the district to find more ways to improve the English learner program and meet the changing needs of our children. Therefore, we have three recommendations this year that we would like to, we would like the Board to support. The first is to make sure that our English learners and their instructional programs are a priority for everyone. We want to see the district embrace the students' primary language and value the students' cultural heritage. We would like to see more supplemental materials in their primary language and increase in the bilingual staff and the opening of the dual-language immersion program in 2017-2018. The Board will be reviewing the El Cap for approval soon and we ask that the plan reflect the specific needs of English learners, including more teacher's training, more coaches and Spanish materials for the elementary schools. Our second overarching recommendation is to continue to improve communication between parents, school sites, and the district staff. We ask that the bilingual office assistants have their hours of availability, parents increase. We feel that increasing the number of bilingual aides and other staff will support the parents' ability to communicate about their child's education and learn about what is happening in the classroom. We would also like to see more site administrators participate in their ELAC meetings and that they collaborate with the ELAC officers to set agendas. Finally, we believe that it is extremely important to continue building capacity and understanding of the needs of our English learner students for the Board, administrators, teachers, and support staff. Training needs to continue for administrators and staff who work with English learners. Teachers need increased training and coaching to adequately support the English learner students in their classrooms. With the new dual-language immersion program, having more coaches is even more important. As parents, we want to continue with the training from this year, like the Latino Literacy Project, and we also want to bring Project Aspire training to our district. We have said, English learners need to be a priority for the entire district. Thank you. And now, I refer you back to Sylvia.
Thank you, Bethany.[1761.11][1761.11][applause] And now, I just want to recognize our three parents for being here. They spent three subcommittee meetings preparing this presentation for you all and today just happens to be Mother's Day in Mexico and so I want to honor them early on. Si pueden venir para que les dé un reconocimiento?[1785.76][1785.76][applause] Thank you so much and are there any questions or? I'm just very happy, thank you.
Okay, appreciate it. Item eight, formerly eight A which got moved, Board of Education meeting on videotaping.
Yes, some time ago, board members requested information about videotaping our meetings for greater transparency. Some members of the public can't always get here in the evening, they may be working. At the time, the information that we had was that it might be somewhat cost prohibitive. However, we have somewhat of a boy wonder that we hired as our manager of technology who just comes up with all sorts of innovative ideas. So when I went to him again and told him to, you know, give us the options that we have because just being told that maybe we can't afford it probably in my opinion wasn't a good answer. Instead, let's know what the what is and so he's going to present some options to the board and answer questions. So sorry for calling you. Hey, yeah, that's not very nice.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Engler.
Good evening, board. So as Superintendent Anello mentioned, sorry.
I deserved it.
That was not intended.
Well deserved.
So she, Superintendent Anello wished for me to present to you on some options at streaming or TV. So I just wanted to briefly discuss with you some items with TV and streaming. I have a background in streaming, I do a lot of professional sports events in a prior life for streaming, so I wanted to go over just some pros and cons of each side. On the left you'll see the TV side. It is a common method for all to intake content using tried and true methods. It does have a high cost of entry with equipment, labor and infrastructure it's needed to operate a TV-type production. We can utilize existing outlets in place to place meetings on TV for the public to participate, that's the purpose of public access television. Most of the time you'll need a specialized infrastructure to send videotape to a studio. You'd have to do some editing if we're deciding to do it live or post-meeting, we'd have to do some editing before we could send it to the studio for airing. On the right you'll see some streaming pros and cons. It is a very new way of accessing content live and on-demand. It does have a very low cost of entry with equipment, labor and infrastructure. It's able to be seen across multiple platforms which I'll go for, I'll show you in a few moments. It works on mobile devices which is very important and I'll kind of go into that in a little bit more detail in a few minutes. It is a newer way of consuming content. It has a, it could have a bigger barrier of entry for the community if they don't have internet then that would be an issue. But again, you only do need an internet connection. So I'll kind of go across a little bit with that with some of the mobile devices. So as you're aware, we've recently started posting the audio recordings of these meetings on YouTube for the public to listen to our meetings that are conducted for more transparency. They are only audio meetings, but we can actually use the same medium at no cost to us to livestream these events and add a video component to that. So we already use that system, it is free, we don't have to pay any extra money to stream or put video on it. We have unlimited videos. Once the meeting is complete and we stop the streaming, it actually auto-archives that. So it'll be in the same location that people are already used to seeing our recordings for our audio. And then they can also view it on-demand, they can go to specific time indexes, whatever they want, they can see specific items that maybe pertain to their interests. And again, we can stream in full HD quality with audio from these mics to the meeting very easily. These are just an example of the type of supported devices, Apple TVs, Roku's, these are called streaming devices. They can be very inexpensive, low barrier to entry. I believe you can get a Chromecast which is the one on the lower left for about forty dollars. They plug into any standard TV that's out there today. TVs actually have the YouTube app on them, it's incredible the amount of exposure you can get on this. Mobile phones, you can watch it on there. You'll see in a lot of households now that they don't have cable. Some of them actually don't have internet and the only internet in the house is their mobile phone. So this is an approach that you can take to gain access for better transparency but also relate to a medium that some of our parents, students, public would have an easier way of getting into. If they have a computer, they can also stream that. So this is all free, they don't, you don't have to, you know, there's no charge for the app, there is honestly a charge for the equipment, but it's very minimal. Some people already have these devices in their houses. So what I'd like to recommend to the board is instead of doing a TV option which has a stronger or more increased cost barrier for us to implement, I would like to recommend that we just livestream our events. I feel we can reach a more, a bigger audience, we would be approaching a newer medium that people are using to ingest their content. If you've seen in the news lately, people called the cord cutters are stopping their cable subscriptions, so much so that ESPN is actually laying off employees because they can't make the same amount of money that they did before because a lot of their income is based on subscriber fees. A lot of people are cutting the cord and using streaming as an option, you'll hear it as Hulu, Netflix, all these other products that are out there that stream. We can actually use existing district resources, we have an internet connection, we have network ports here that we can use to stream, we have an audio system here that we can plug into. The investment, we have different ways of investment. I've had some, one way we can do is very simple, we can just put a camera somewhere in the corner there so that everyone can see the board and the public that are making comment and we can stream it from a very compact solution that just plugs into a wall and streams. We can get a little bit more advanced if I had an idea that we could incorporate our students and promote civic engagement. With that, we could buy some equipment for our high schools and they can rotate and come in and stream these board meetings. They can be part of the government and how it works and be more proactive in the district and how it operates. And when they're not streaming these events, they can go back to their high schools and stream their football games, basketball games, graduation ceremonies, plays, any event that they want to do because they have the equipment and it can be used in multiple ways. I could think of ideas where Deer Valley can use this equipment at DVTV, Aniok High School can use it in their media academy that we're building at the 1100 Hall right now. So we can actually work with our academies to have student involvement. Again, I talked about civic engagement and we can stream other events. With TV, if we wanted to do a live feed, we'd need infrastructure to do that, we'd need to partner with a channel. It probably more than likely means we have to install some work infrastructure to send that signal live to them which could be very expensive and there's a labor component as everything has. We could also do a tape delay where we record the event here and then we can post it or give it to public access television for them to air later. That would increase transparency, but it would be no different than what we're doing right now with our audio recordings. So I like, I recommend the streaming because I think you get the best of both worlds, you get the live response for the transparency of our constituents and then you can get that on-demand so that folks that couldn't make the meeting, they can go in and review that. It integrates with board docs, so when our public goes in to look at our past agendas and meeting minutes, they can actually watch that video stream and it will link to the agenda items that are discussed. So the public can just click that agenda item and go right there with the video. And we kind of already do that. I've still got to go back to the last two meetings and mark them up, but that is there. So of course, we want to do the will of the board, but I wanted to recommend this as an option for you and see which way you'd like Superintendent Anello and myself to move forward in order to provide the service to the public. Any questions?
I have a question. So the cost of streaming would just be the investment in the cameras?
Mm-hmm. If we, if we kind of did the entry level, I did some pricing today of the box we would need to actually stream is about six hundred dollars, which is very competitive. And the camera, we could probably get that for maybe about fifteen hundred dollars, give or take, I'd have to go look at some specs and just see what the quality. If we did something at the high school level, that'd be a little, where the high schools are coming in, I would probably put a little bit more effort and some specs for them in order to allow them to stream their other events. We'd probably be looking at anywhere between twelve to fifteen thousand for the box that actually helps them learn, they're actually doing a live broadcast, so it's, they have a switch, they have a panel where they can switch camera angles and they could do all sorts of stuff with that. I would estimate with cameras and that it'll probably be about thirty thousand per high school. And we'd probably, we'd do first, Aniok High School and Deer Valley, we'd look at Dozier Libby to see if they wanted to participate. It's a little bit different since they don't have athletic programs and they're more of a medical-focused group, but there's certainly use cases for them to use that equipment. TV I would say would be far beyond that in my experience and it all depends on what level we want to do it at. Any other questions from the board?
Yes, in regards to live streaming, the cost would just be a camera.
It'd be a camera and the box that we need that takes that signal and converts it to a medium that we can use to stream. But we can use our own internet connection, we wouldn't have an issue with it. As you've been aware of my previous times I've been up here, we've talked about the internet being saturated. Well, right now, this is the time where it's not getting used much at all, so we have plenty of space to do that.
Would we be in possession of the camera and box or would the high school have it?
I'm sure we can open up to, if they wanted to use that as a piece of equipment for themselves, we'd change a little bit of the spec on the camera just to be more capable of what they might use it for. But certainly, I mean, depending on how we want to move forward, if we had possession of it, we'd probably secure it in a location and just set it up as every board meeting would occur. But I mean, I could see this, we could also use it for the personnel commission if they wished. There's lots of use cases that we can do, that we can stream these events for transparency and public awareness.
So I know that, I believe it's Deer Valley students that go to the El Cap meetings and video and tape, so I thought we recently purchased some new equipment for our students that was close to fifteen K. Do you remember, Ms. Anello?
I did, yes, as part of a project that they did and they were, we provided some equipment for the classroom, but I don't think it's the same equipment, I don't know exactly.
I haven't seen it, but I can certainly investigate to see its viability.
Yeah, I think it would be a good idea to assess what they already have since we just spent a good amount of money and then I like the idea of live streaming, I know my church recently started live streaming, they have their own app and they live stream all of the services and you can log in and still gain access to those services, so I like the idea of live streaming.
And we'd be able to put this on our website, I mean, there's a lot of places that you can get to it. And again, it's, you know, it's how you look at it and how you want to move forward. You know, we can make it work in any direction we want to go, I just personally, I feel just through my experience of doing these types of events, that streaming is a pretty easy medium to get to. And you know, you got to take in consideration the constituents that are out there, what's, you know, do they have internet? If they do, what types of devices do they have? If they don't have internet, do they have a mobile phone that they can stream it at? I think either way you do it, you're increasing, you know, public participation in a great way, so I think any way we decide to go is a positive.
So I actually recently did a little bit of research and I know CCC TV has an education channel, are you aware of?
I have not heard about that, but I can certainly, if you want to...
I know that it is, there are a couple of cities that use it now and I could possibly get that information. Yeah, I know they're determining how they want to use it, so that's something else to think about. I think Comcast, somehow it works with Comcast if you're going to broadcast through, you know, any type of TV service, but I know that's available and they just tested not too long ago with a program that they ran, so.
We can certainly reach out to them and see what we can come up with and provide some other solutions for you.
Thank you.
I'd be open to moving forward on this to get a little bit more concrete proposal on definitive costs and how soon we could get this thing rolling.
Yeah, I'd be happy to provide that to you and I'll work with Superintendent Anello to get that scheduled.
Other trustees interested?
I agree, I, yes.
Yes, Gibson-Greit.
The YouTube, not storing it on our own servers is a little, you know, for me it's a little bit a conundrum. What happens if YouTube down the road decides they're not going to store it? I mean, that's our archive, so do any other cities do both? They have a cloud server where they keep their own and then YouTube it for convenience?
I'll have to research that. At first glance, how I would approach that is I would probably just record on the camera and then keep that as an archive, mostly just because if something happened to our internet or there's a disconnect or something like that, we'd want to make sure we could upload an actual real file to that, but we could certainly look into archival of that as well.
And the other thing, it's public education and government access channel, Ellen Barton with the city, I'll get you the information. But they already collect a franchise tax fee of one percent of every cable customer, so maybe we can talk to them to perhaps, if there's a way, to help fund this project with that money.
Yeah, I'd be happy to.
Because it'd only be spent on PEG channels, so.
Yeah, I'd be happy to.
The only other thing too, I think that I'd like for you to think about is perhaps a dedicated server, you know, in terms of what trustee Gibson-Greit is talking about and that would eliminate any concerns and also at some point be a part of our backup system.
Sure, yeah, definitely.
Well, if you have it on backup someplace on however...
Oh yeah, we'll have it on backup.
Its own server, I don't know, but still.
You bet.
So I think what I'm hearing direction from the board is to move forward, to develop a proposal and to bring it forward?
Well, especially the six hundred dollar one that just goes up there and you go down. I mean, that's a no-brainer.
The fifteen hundred dollar camera, that's within our reach.
That's something we could do very quickly, you know, and then identify a concrete solution as well, whatever.
And I applaud you for your openness and creativity and just not taking no for an answer, seeing a way to make this happen.
Yeah, we're here to serve, so.
And I apologize early on.
No, it's okay, I appreciate.
With great respect.
It's okay, and I appreciate all your feedback and I'll come back with you with a better, more detailed proposal now that we see where we want to go, so appreciate your time.
We have public comments, do we allow that or no?
Did you wish to make a comment? If you could turn the card in?
I will, in fact, that's all right. I'm sorry, I didn't see this on the agenda. I want to say thank you to the board members and Stephanie and to the Wonder Boy, I'm just kidding. So that makes you the Wonder Girl then, right? Okay, I'm just messing. But anyways, I think this is good for transparency, although I'd prefer it to be live on TV like the city council does and one suggestion, the only other way to do that would be to keep the cost down would be to use the council chambers and then hire whoever they use to do their staff in the background. And they've been doing it for twenty years and this is long past due here and that's my only concern and what Mr. Engler mentioned was the, those who don't have internet access or it's usually a generation gap, that's why my newspapers, both in print and online, because there is a generation gap of those who go online and those who don't. My mother doesn't have a computer, she has, does have her iPhone as of two years ago, first one she's ever had computer-wise in her life, she'll be eighty this year. And so I just use her as an example, is there a way to then hook in with the local cable access channel as the council has theirs on, I think it's channel twenty-four Comcast only, but that's only for Comcast users. I don't think that's for any other, like DirecTV, do they get it too? Oh, they do get it too again, okay. So, okay, others can get that too. If there's even a way to be able to have that, this is what we did for the council in candidate forums last year, we took a DVD and took it to them so they can then show it later, okay? So you wouldn't be live on TV, but you could still at least show it later on TV for those who don't see it livestream or don't have access to that. Thank you for pursuing this, for transparency, for the public to know what's going on and in live time. It also helps us in the media to not always have to show up here and we can sit home on our laptop and type your stuff in and not have to write it down and then retype it in, anyway, so it's, I appreciate it.
Okay, we move to item number nine on the agenda hearings, we have none. Item number ten, public presentations, we have none. Item eleven, consent items. Do we have any items to be polled?
I have a question on item B, so I'll hold that.
Item B to be polled, any others?
Item, we're going to talk about, we're going to talk about all the other items like item J, I suppose, because this under consent, I'll make this bold.
Hold it, yes.
Okay, let's pull it.
J? Okay.
Board President, I have a question. I?
An I? Okay, so items B, J and I?
Mr. President, there's also a revision on M and N for the record.
M and N revision?
Then I just had a quick question about item K, just for clarification.
So I don't know if we necessarily have to pull it, but...
Okay.
Yes?
I would think that's the best way.
Yes.
Got it.
Yeah. Okay. Do we wish to address the items first, or vote on all of them except B, J, K, and I?
I'd make a motion to approve all the items that were not mentioned.
Okay. We have a motion to approve everything but B, J, K, and I?
Another question?
It wasn't I, it was J.
J.
Sorry.
That's been pulled. We'll get that.
Oh, okay. That was an I.
So what was an I?
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, so we'll take I off, okay. Do I have a second on accepting the calendar, the consent items except B, J, and K?
I'll do the second with the, also with the revisions from...
Revisions of M and N.
HR and classified.
Okay, revisions on M and N. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, any opposed? Okay. Motion carries to accept the consent calendar with the exception of B, J, and K, which will be discussed, and revisions on M and N. So moving to item number B, which was polled.
On item B, I'm noticing that the legal services, and I was a little surprised at the legal services at 56K, and really surprised at the total amount of the entire PO. So just wanted to ask, are there any new contracts or anything in this purchase order report that the board hasn't seen? Any special, anything new, anything going on? Because I was a little surprised to see how large of an amount the spending is on this PO. Just a question.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Is it a specific attorney or...
No, it's just total. It just says, it doesn't say that. I don't see that. I just see the...
Hang on, let me get...
The original amount is $56,000, and there's an additional $2,600, because we asked the services and attorneys to do our documents and all the construction items we don't have in place.
And this is just for the services for Measure B, correct?
Actually, B and C.
Okay, B and C, thank you.
And the cop car and all those.
Yeah, because it doesn't, it just has the age, it just has the firm, so it's an increase of 58K.
No, 2,600.
2,600, but the total balance is 5, okay, total amount was 58. And then the other thing is looking under, I see that, you know, we have the Title I. Was that an expenditure or was that some, it says 44K. Is that an actual expenditure on the Title I?
The check.
Uh-huh. Where does...
Well, it's a reimbursement from Title I. It's a tutoring program that is paid by Title I, and then the district is considered a vendor. So we issue a check from Title I, and then it's deposited to general fund to pay for the salaries for the tutoring program.
Okay, so we're kind of paying ourselves. Okay, I just want that to be clear.
It's a reimbursement.
As you recall, we submitted to the state of California, you have to use an approved vendor list, and we felt that some of the vendors were not as qualified as our own employees. And so we submitted a proposal to the state of California, and were approved to be a provider. We are required to provide that service, and now we're using some of our own staff.
So these are our teachers?
Yes.
Okay, just want to make that clear.
Yes.
All right.
With that understanding, do we have a motion to accept item B?
So moved.
Moved by trustee Vincenzo. A second?
Second.
Second by Crystal Sawyer, trustee Crystal Sawyer-White. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, item B. We move to item J for questions and comments.
I'm sorry.
You can go ahead. We may have the same question.
Mistakenly, I didn't, I went L.
Okay, so I have a question.
Go ahead.
I have a question about J. So this, was this, was this opening posted somewhere for the Citizens Bond Oversight vacancy? Because we're recommending someone for the appointment. And then I see that coming up in June, there will be other expirations, but that doesn't mean that people won't then reapply for their seat. But I just wanted to understand how it works.
In the bottom of the list of the members, we says, we say here that the terms are two years, and no committee member may serve for more than three consecutive terms. I understand that Mr. Joe Goralca is on his third term, so he cannot reapply. I think we have to wait for a year or so for him to get back on the committee, and that's why we're recommending this gentleman, Dennis Clay.
And it was posted, and we received one application.
So it was posted on our district website?
I think...
It says right here that it was in the East Bay Times and also posted on the Antioch Unified School District website.
We just got one? Okay.
Yes.
Then I see there's also Renee Hudson, third term. How many terms can a parent serve?
Three consecutive.
Okay, great, that's great. So she's okay. All right, that was the question. So I think that, I had people asking about it, and I think more parents would like to, more people from the community would like to serve. So I guess this incumbent upon me as a board member to pay attention, because I wasn't aware. So I bring it as a part of the discussion. So this is typically posted on our website when it becomes available, and perhaps, I'm just going, was this, is this something that would, can be included in the superintendent's report if the position is available? Or is that something that would not necessarily occur?
Well, it's also advertised, so, and then it could be on the report.
Okay, just for easy access, that's all. Okay, well, thank you.
And as it notes here, there'll be many vacancies after June 30th, so we'll have to keep an eye on that. With that understanding, do I hear a motion to approve the application of Dennis Clay?
So moved.
Moved by trustee Vincenzo. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Hack. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to accept the application of Dennis Clay for Member at Large. Carries item number J on the consent calendar, which brings us to item K. Questions or comments on item K? Vendor agreement with Quail Lakes Baptist Church on behalf of Park Middle School.
Specifically, is there a question?
Just what services were provided, that's all.
It's a upcoming field trip, and it is a one-way bus ride.
Okay, thank you.
Wait, they're not bringing them back?
It says one way.
It's one way.
Because I dropped the kids off.
Right.
Another service, I believe, is taken.
Yeah, there's another service that's taken them, and then they're coming back.
That's why I'm like, what is this?
Pardon me, but I'd like them back.
They're coming back.
One-way ticket. Okay, it's for an item amount of $100, I believe, yes.
That's it, okay.
Do I hear a motion to accept?
So moved.
Moved, trustee Vincenzo. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Crystal Sawyer-White. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion for acceptance of vendor agreement with Quail Lakes Baptist Church, accepted unanimously. So that clears the consent calendar. We move then to item number 12, which would be...
Excuse me, President Rulick?
Yes.
I know that board member Sawyer-White had a, had a question about...
Which item?
About item L.
Yeah, L.
L, I'm sorry.
And so I just want to be able to answer that question.
Oh, thanks.
Yes, item L.
Yes, in regards to the student teaching experience, I'm just curious, is this, does this lead to internship hiring locally for students here in Antioch? I think we should have more teachers locally trained.
That's actually my item, and yes, if we bring student teachers into our schools that are going through their teaching programs, so they're not interns, they're actually students at the time, and they serve under the mentorship of our teachers here in Antioch, they're more likely to come back and work for us as they get experience in our schools.
Okay, thank you.
Had we voted on L?
Yes.
I believe we did, yes. So, okay, that brings us to item number 12, which is action items. We have none. Item 13, items for discussion at board, none. Item 14, resolutions for first reading, resolution number 201617, safe haven, safe schools resolution.
Yes, I'd like to introduce that. We, at the last board meeting, we had requests by community members and others to bring forward a resolution for a safe haven, and one was brought before the board in draft form at the last board meeting, and the direction given was to come back with two drafts, that one, and then one that contained input from board members. So what you have in front of you is the original draft that was presented to you at the last board meeting, and then also you have a version with strikeouts. The strikeouts or additions include all of the input from board members. So anything that you sent me, I either took it out, added, and that's what you have before you for discussion, both of the resolutions.
Discussing, not voting.
Correct. It's a first read for input and discussion.
The point of nation, both of them, at the bottom say safe haven's school district.
I know I made a number of recommendations for a revised resolution. I didn't, and the whereas, the Antioch Unified School District is committed to preventing and ending acts of discrimination or bullying based on the student's immigration status, race, ethnicity, color, national origin, religion, genetics, or disability. I didn't personally strike out age, gender, gender identity, or sexual orientation, but you're saying that there was some collective input.
I believe that was trustee Vincenzo.
Okay.
Yes. I did, because this is a resolution that focuses on immigration, and so I didn't want anything to take away from it being completely focused on immigration. But I also did research and looked at other, looked at Mount Diablo, looked at Akalani's, looked at Pittsburgh. I looked at quite a few safe haven resolutions, and most of those resolutions focused on diversity, ethnicity, and of all, inclusive of everyone, and didn't necessarily focus on age, gender, gender identity, sexual orientation. I believe that the Board of Education has laws in place that protect everyone under these items, underage, gender, gender identities, sexual orientation. And so I didn't think it was absolutely necessary to include it in the resolution. Perhaps other trustees may feel differently. But what I did want to have focused on was culture, ethnicity, language, religion, because those are often things that people are persecuted for. And then if we want to do another resolution that specifically focuses on age, gender, gender identity, sexual orientation, genetics, or disability, I'm open to that. But I, I feel that if we lump it all in, it takes away from the protection for our students. I think that, I think it's comprehensive and should be a separate resolution. That's just my personal opinion.
I also did some research comparing other districts, and I would like to add that relevance to our student population, I did some research on ed data that I would like to list, the, that we have, this is from 2015 to 2016, 7,458 Hispanic students, which is listed in other districts, which is relevant to immigration, and also students of color, a total of 5,715 students. So an example is, whereas 17,000 students in Sacramento was an example, City Unified are of Latino descent, and students of color are more than 64% of students qualify for free lunch and reduced lunch programs. So that's relevant to our district, are primarily Hispanic students. That was what I would like to add.
Do you want to add another whereas?
Another whereas.
Okay.
So I think also that the other districts that I look at also focus on creating outstanding learning opportunities that empower and nurture and help our students achieve educational goals. And there is a whereas clause from Mount Diablo that I think is very powerful, and it says all students have the right to attend school regardless of their immigration status. The United States Supreme Court, and it talks about that item that we have there, but it's a little more extensive. And then it goes on to say, elementary and secondary public education, they have, we cannot deny them based on their immigration status. And then there are other, that they are protected, and the lifelong harm that it would inflict on child and society itself, and constitutional equal protection rights. It's that public education is there to protect students, and we cannot deny any student a public education. It also spells out state laws. I do want to say that, in looking at the ICE policy, ICE has a policy that prevents any type of surge in sensitive places. And the sensitive places are identified, schools are protected from ICE coming on campus, and there is a policy that actually talk about that. And so I just want to make sure that, you know, everyone knows that schools are considered sensitive locations, and oftentimes, everything that's stated in our resolution in terms of protecting students, ICE would be forbidden for coming into sensitive area. Another sensitive area is preschools, primary schools, secondary schools, post-secondary schools, including colleges and universities, other institutional, institutions of learning such as vocational or trade schools, hospitals, churches, synagogues, mosques, or other institutions of worship such as buildings rented for the purpose of religious services, the site of a funeral, wedding, or other public religious ceremony, and a site during the occurrence of a public demonstration as a march, rally, or parade. All of those are considered sensitive areas by the ICE policy, and they cannot, based on federal law, supersede the policy for the sensitive areas for any reason. So I just want to put that out there to our students and families.
Point of clarity, Superintendent Nella, are we moving one of these resolutions forward? What's the thought of doing this tonight?
Well, actually, I, I was just following the direction of the board. I'm hoping that I would get the will of the board to know, do they want to move forward with one of these resolutions? Do they still want to work on some language? Is there some language they can look at one of these resolutions and agree on? Because it is a time-sensitive matter, and coming back incessantly to wordsmith might not actually bring what the board is hoping to achieve, but that's something I need to hear from the board.
I have this three-minute documentation to share, which I'm not going to do tonight. We'll get to the vote, I'll do that. But one of those words is wordsmithing. We can get hung up in wordsmithing and doing this, and this, and this. I think the one we were presented last time... I think the one we were presented last time, I'm very comfortable with, just personally.
Some clarification, so the information you just, the information you just shared, is that, how did it relate to these? Were you planning on changing one of these? I wasn't sure what that, that's.
What, the ICE policy?
Yes, I mean.
So I want the public to know that.
Okay, but my question to you, does that pertain to anything in these documents that you want to change this evening?
So, the only thing that, not necessarily, it's a point of information, so that we know that there's a protection in place for sensitive areas.
But just for the purpose of these documents, before I give my changes or questions, I just want to make sure you weren't changing anything else in the document.
No.
Okay. I'm going to go with my statement last week, or the last board. I have a challenge with the word safe haven. I indicated last time there was two points where it said safe haven, so one of them came out, so thank you. I think the other one was overlooked, it's in the last paragraph, and it should just say to support our students in a safe and welcoming environment, something like that. I am not opposed to age, gender, gender identity, sexual orientation. I think those are discriminatory issues too, that could be addressed in this, and I don't have a prob, oh, and then on this first bullet point here, and I apologize for not sending it in advance, but it should state.
The first or second, I'm sorry.
Second page, first bullet, where it says working in concert with present law to protect students from the illegal sharing of student and parent slash guardian immigration status with federal agencies or officials. I think it should also states city, state, or federal agencies or officials, because we don't want the local police or, you know, federal marsh, state marshals, or whatever they are at the state level, asking questions. And then again, I'm not opposed to bullying, and those, those things that are struck out in the, do you have that one up there? The safe, it's the.
Safe schools.
Safe schools one.
So what I've heard so far from trustee Hack is that he's comfortable moving forward with the first iteration, and that Ms. Gibson-Grey is more comfortable with the second, with a few minor changes, which she pointed out, which is the striking of safe haven and changed into safe school, and also adding back the gender, those identity, and the third was the adding, second bullet, add city, state, or federal agencies or officials.
Right, and I want to explain my reasoning.
I agree with the situation.
I believe it is a political issue, and I've said it before, and what's going to happen, the same thing that's happening with sanctuary cities, that word safe haven will be, have a bull's eye on it. I want to give you what you want, I just want to avoid the use of that word, because in the long run, he's going to, the, if there is a court case that says we are going after safe haven cities just like we are sanctuary cities, then we will be in that limelight. I am not an elected official on the state level. I only care about our students here, our students and our parents. So what can I do to make you feel safe and comfortable to go to school, to have your children here? That is to have a resolution that gives you that comfort level, but it also, in my opinion, protects us from losing state, from federal money, and also, we cannot have our employees do anything that's against the law. And the second one, in my opinion, is one board member, is a compromise, so it gives you what you want, what you need, and what will make you feel better, but it also is my job, as a protector of the school district, and the money, that's what I need to do. So I just want to, you know, I cannot vote for the first one, I can vote for the second one.
So, this is Diane. If we got rid of safe haven, what are you suggesting?
I'm fine.
No, no, what wording were you going to use?
I said it.
Safe schools.
Something to the effect, to support our students in a safe and welcoming environment. And I said last time there was only two safe haven usages in the document. Replace them with safe and environment, that's all I care about.
That's not on one of these, you know?
Yeah, it's on the second one that still needs to be corrected with the line through.
All right, well, yeah, the line through, but there wasn't this, there wasn't another verbiage in this place.
Right, right. And other than that, like I said, I'm fine with the bullying and, you know, the sexual orientation. I think our students have a variety of issues when they come to school. Not everyone applies, but I don't have a problem with including that in making our students and parents feel safe and welcoming.
You know, I can agree with the city and state document that you said, Diane, but I need some kind of language that replaces.
Safe haven?
Safe haven.
Okay, so.
That makes sense.
Superintendent, okay, let me just read the whole thing. Now, be it therefore resolved that the Antioch Unified School District Board of Trustees hereby directs a superintendent to support our students in a safe and welcoming environment. This shall include, and then it goes on to list the bullet points.
Can I ask a point of clarification? I'm sorry, there is a strikeout also on the bullet about ICE in and around schools, so I just, did you have any thoughts on that, trustee Gibson-Grey?
I didn't have a problem with it, it is a big concern to our.
Which one, there I said? Striking it out, or keeping it?
No, keeping it, I don't have a problem with it.
Which one? The bullet that talks about ICE?
It was in the last one.
Yeah.
I said I was okay with it.
Yep.
It doesn't direct our employees to do anything that's not within current law, and I'm on my third term, and I've never, you know, knocked wood, but, you know, times are changing. We have not had this come up before, but I don't have a problem with it stating it.
Thank you.
I would be comfortable with changing those couple of words that Diane mentioned, adding those words, city and state, certainly. If we come up with a, another verbiage of the safe haven, I'd be okay with that, but as far as the ICE, I think absolutely.
I said, you're for it or against it? You're for it, you want it included?
The ICE?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And the gender, and age, and all that other stuff, sure. I just think the only thing, I disagree with you, or not disagreeing, I think you added city and state, which I think's fine. If you don't want to save haven, I need to have a comfort level of what we do.
Yeah, just that one word. It's, and it was taken out of the original, and I said it was there twice, I think it was probably just overlooked.
I think I overlooked it, my apology.
Yeah, no, that's my, but yeah, we come up with another verbiage to that.
So actually, I like the safe haven name in it, and I actually wrote a letter to Southern Poverty Law Center, I sent a letter to Simon Weisenthal Center, and I sent a letter to another agency asking them if safe haven was a code word to identify those places that would protect immigrant students, and I'm still waiting for that information to come back. So I just wanted to clarify that, I don't see anything wrong with the word a safe haven resolution. I do want to also say that typically, even though we have immigrants of all ethnicities, all races, right now, the focus is on Mexican students, we have a very large population of Mexican, Hispanic, and Latino students, and so, you know, I just want to say that this, you know, saying a safe haven is, you know, what the language that all districts are using, but I do want to make sure that, you know, we take out any extraneous information. For example, I think rather than having the Declaration of Independence of the United States be the first line, the first whereas should be the Antioch Unified School District Board of Trustees is committed to educating all students in a safe and welcoming environment, rather than having it in the middle of the page. I think that if we want to reassure our families, that has to be number one. It shouldn't be hidden in the middle of the page. The other thing I want to say is that, as a mental health professional, I am reminded of the Gwen Arawaho case. I don't know if, you know, how many of you are familiar with that case, where a person was, you know, a human being was killed because of their sexuality. They were hunted and killed, and so I think that anything related to gender is so powerful that we'd have to focus on it separately. I know children are bullied every day on school because of gender, I think that that has to be a really huge, strong force of its own, and that's why I wanted it, you know, struck and out of this, you know, taken out of this resolution. But if all of the board members don't mind this language staying in here, then that's fine with me to strike it out. But I am really, really concerned, because oftentimes, you know, if you are of ethnic background, and then you have a gender issue, that's double whammy, that's also, you know, something else to deal with, layers and layers and layers of discrimination. So I just want to make sure that we're supporting our families in each realm, not packing it into one item, and that is why I said that. And I also want to say too, at the Antioch award ceremony, Antioch High School award ceremony, there was one man that said his family were German immigrants. So there, and he talked about how it felt to be an immigrant coming into America, so I just think that there's so many families of immigrant background that we need to really focus and make sure that we are inclusive of everybody in this community, and culture, ethnicity, language, heritage, I think this, to be inclusive, the safe haven resolution has to make sure that we have all that language in there. But I, you know, I just think that all the other stuff should be moved to the bottom of it, everything related to Antioch Unified School District should be in there, and it should say that the Antioch Unified School District Board of Trustees hereby directs all of Antioch Unified School District to support the creation of a safe haven school district. We need every staff on board for this. If we just say superintendent, then I feel like it puts the responsibility solely on the superintendent. I think we all have to be on the same page, and that's what I have to say about that.
And just to clarify, we only direct a superintendent?
Right. But in terms of creating a safe environment, I'm just saying for, not specifically just the environment, our entire school district, so.
I'm in agreement, based on the research of the districts, to move the paragraph up in regards to clarifying Antioch Unified School District instead of Declaration of Independence, United States of America, recognizing every individual right to life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness. And I would like to add, whereas, in regards to the number of students, of Hispanic and Latino students enrolled in the district, I believe that's relevant to safe haven resolution.
So, I like what I'm to find, figure out.
You know, I think whereas Declaration of Independence should be first, but I'm comfortable with moving up Antioch Unified School District to number two, just to change the position a little bit, but we have a framework of the national.
Okay. Boy, Sue, trustees asked to do the impossible to be solemn, and so, I'm glad we're trying to make it our own, this, I think that's really important, that this is Antioch's document. And in that light, I'll go over point by point my thoughts. I have no problem in moving up AUSD to either one or two, I can live with either one, either before or after the Declaration of Independence, no problem there. I would prefer to keep age, gender, gender identity, sexual orientation incorporated into this document. I just find it confusing, we would have one document where that's mentioned, and then another document where it wasn't mentioned yet. So it just seems to me more consistency that whenever we're talking about discrimination, we cover the whole spectrum, so I would like to keep those included. I'm not comfortable, I need to be convinced, since we're not voting on this final vote, I could live with moving it forward, but I still need to give some more thought to safe haven. I'm not very comfortable with safe haven, because it just, to me, has political overtones of this whole sanctuary city argument, and this and that, and I think the school district is getting out of its league when we start to get involved in issues that are federal, and where the can's been kicked down the road by both parties for far too long on immigration reform. So, I could live with, in support of the rights of all students to a safe environment, I'm quite comfortable with that. So, safe haven would be one, at least for now, that I would prefer to keep out of the document. The one on ICE, I'm not comfortable with that. I've lived in Antioch for 21 years, and I, as I questioned the last meeting we had, I still haven't heard of one report where ICE has been on, on any of our campuses and violated any of our laws. So I would like to keep that paragraph in. I'm glad nobody's objecting to the paragraph, working in concert with present law. I preferred that, in fact, I made that recommendation to restricting, is restricting sounds to me like we're being uncooperative. I think working in concert with present law to protect students from the illegal sharing of student and parent guardian immigration status is a more positive way of presenting it rather than a negative, the word restricting. And that would be it for.
So, so far what I've heard that you agree on is that we should have a resolution.
Yes, which I think, which I think is a, I think is a positive.
So that's a good start.
Yes.
I'm hearing, and I need a little weigh-in on the word safe haven versus safe school. I've heard from Walter and Diane that you're not comfortable with that verbiage, I've heard from Gary that you are comfortable with the original document and say, that you might go for safe schools, okay?
If that's the hanging up.
And, how about you, Ms. Crystal White?
Safe haven's fine with me.
Safe haven, are you comfortable with safe schools? If we were to move forward?
I prefer a safe.
Okay.
I prefer that, but if the majority is going that direction.
Okay, and how about you, Ms. Vincent? Do you have a preference, or?
Safe haven. I think that we, you know, I would say that we move it forward with the notion that we're going to fine-tune it. At some point, we're going to refine it as we go along, so I prefer a safe haven.
Okay, so I've heard from three of the five that safe haven is the direction of language?
And I think that's positive. As they say, we don't want the, we want, don't want the perfect to get in the way of the good, so I think we're making progress.
Okay, and then I also heard from three of you that you were comfortable with adding to the second bullet, city, state, or federal agencies or officials, and so that's a majority, so we can move forward with that one?
I agree with that.
Okay.
I think I voiced an opinion on that.
Yeah, I didn't voice an opinion about it, and I just want to go on record as saying, if I receive information from all of those watch agencies that have stats all over the U.S., that safe haven is a code for something, I will be bringing this back to the board saying we need to take it off, but for now, I'm waiting to hear from them, so I just want to be clear.
And as far as the ICE, whereas, I've heard from one of you that you're not comfortable with that, I've heard with one, two of you that you are, and so, Ms. Crystal White, are you comfortable with that whereas? And Ms. Vincent, can you please weigh in?
Just a second, let me find it.
I'm fine with the ICE whereas.
So it sounds like, one, two, three? So it sounds like we have three on the ICE, keep that. I heard just the one concern about gender, gender identity, but then I heard three of you say keep that.
That's fine, I won't, I won't push it, but.
Okay, so we'll keep that. And then I heard from Ms. Crystal White that she would like to add a specific reference to Hispanic and Latino, did you say Latino or just Hispanic?
Hispanic and Latino.
Latino, immigrants?
In regards to the number, and it's increasing.
So I need to hear from the rest of the board, what their thoughts on that.
That's not an exclusion of anything, it's an addition.
It's an addition to actually state the number of students of color, and Latino and Hispanic students.
I know that that's included in some resolutions, I did download and look at them, where they identify the percentage of ethnic students in their district, so it just depends on, you know, what the purpose is, but those resolutions are once again very inclusive of diversity, they have specific language around religion, et cetera, et cetera, so I don't know how appropriate.
I think the counterargument that I've heard to that, and not to say we shouldn't do it, because that's obviously the will of the board, but the counterargument I've heard to specifically saying Latino or Hispanic immigrants, is that we have a lot of Syrian immigrants, and we have a lot of people who are fleeing war-torn countries who are coming here that might feel excluded by the language, and I know that's not the purpose at all, I think your, your purpose was to include, but that is the counterargument that the board should consider. but that is the counterargument that the board should consider when weighing in.
Well, clarification, it didn't say immigrants, it would just say Hispanic, Latinos, 7,400 students enrolled in Unified School District, and then including other students with, students of color.
Right.
To actually state.
And the counterargument I've heard of that, and again, I'm not saying the board shouldn't do it, I just want to offer you options, is that there is a, some people feel that that positively presumes that people of Hispanic and Latino of descent or somehow have an irregular immigration status. So I'm just giving you a different perspective that some people have shared that you all should consider. And I know that's not the purpose of you including that, your, your purpose was for inclusion, but.
So I don't know that, I'm sorry, I don't know that we necessarily need to identify the separate group, but are you wanting us to acknowledge that we have the percentage of our students or of ethnic background? Would that be more appropriate, rather than identifying each ethnic group?
That's true.
Do you, is that what you're saying?
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
So you want us to, you want us to have a statement that says, whereas AUSD is a certain percentage of ethnic students, well, yeah, et cetera, et cetera, and so, I don't know how the board feels about that. Just want to bring clarification.
Thank you.
Since our board policies are not meant to be date and time specific, I would be challenged by including that information, because next year it will change, and then next year it will change, and we have enough out-of-date board policies, but that's my personal opinion.
I would agree, good idea, but I don't think it's necessary.
Language should be inclusive.
So, you're saying?
Small groups.
Yeah, everybody.
So don't add it in?
So don't add it, is that what I'm hearing? Just?
Yes, I, I appreciate that definition, what you're saying, absolutely true.
Right.
But I think as far as the resolution, that sort of dilutes the message or specifies it too far.
Okay, so I hear a majority saying we will not put that in? And I'm trying to remember if there were any outstanding issues, then I think, unless I missed something, those were the points that I wrote down from the board. Okay? And would you like me to recap?
Yes, because I want to make sure we have diversity, ethnicity, I just want to make sure it's all included.
So what I heard was, the majority of the board agrees with the language Safe Haven, that you want to include the bullet, in the bullet, federal agency, state, and local city, and that we will keep the ICE, whereas, and we will keep gender identity and the ones that are strike, struck out in the second. And I think that some set up?
City and state.
Yes, city and state, uh huh.
So we're keeping gender, gender identity, and sexual orientation, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
And just so nobody's surprised, in two weeks, or whenever we meet again, if it has the language Safe Haven, I won't be voting in the affirmative.
All right, I think I have some direction, so I'll be bringing it forward with the majority input to the next meeting for action, but we also have comment, I believe, sorry.
Oh yes, we have comments, cause Thomas.
And you can always amend your direction to me, after comment.
Okay, Candy Amigo, item number 14.
Good evening, board members. Sorry, I wasn't planning on speaking, but then I heard what the, what was on the agenda, I did just want to, just make a suggestion. First, I just want, I just appreciate that our district is doing this, I'm going to start getting emotional, stupid Candy, okay. I appreciate so much that our district is doing this for our kids, so much, and I know a lot of our parents do too. Ms. Gibson Gray, I understand what you're saying about Safe Haven, and the suggestion that I have is maybe we just replace the word Haven with district, because that is what we are. So instead of just saying Safe Haven, we say Safe District. And I believe that would cover your concerns, but still, at the same time, we are talking about our district, and hopefully that'll work it out, where you'll be able to vote next time. And thank you so much, all of you, for what you do for our kids, thank you.
Good evening, excuse me, good evening, Antioch District School Board. My name is Omar Navarrete, I'm a resident of Antioch and a member of the East Coast Regional Group. I come to you to speak to you as a proud parent of a Dear Valley High School graduate student, and I'm also a private math tutor for SES Antioch students. I want to, I want to ask you to please rise up to the occasion and pass the Safe Haven Resolution with the title Safe Heaven. Many of the Contra Costa school districts, like Mount Diablo and Acalanis, have passed the Safe Heaven Resolution with support and overwhelming majority, and most importantly, without any hesitation to change the name. Let's send a strong message, let's send a strong and clear message to our families that our Antioch district walks in solidarity with immigrants and families from all ethnic backgrounds. I don't think ASUSD is going to be bullied by threats of new presidency, of withholding funds, which is proven to be unconstitutional, unconstitutional as ruled by the federal district judge, Oreg, in San Francisco. The rule law shall prevail, and your resolution shall prevail with our families and children as well. I have something important to share with you. Be prepared and know your rights, and don't sign anything that you don't understand. That's what I told my daughter three years ago, when she told me a shocking story. Her friend's father was driving his two daughters to Dear Valley High School early in the morning and was pulled over by ICE for no apparent reason. The father did not have legal status, and was arrested and later on deported to his country of birth, Mexico. My daughter empathized with her friends and was also terrorized. She wondered how can a welcoming country have such cruel officers and take her friend's cherished father away, be humiliated in front of kids that were walking while her father was handcuffed and then later deported. I cannot imagine my daughter's friends, how, how my daughter's friends completed their school semester at such an event like this one. It's painful to imagine how the mental frustration, stressful hardships, all of a sudden invaded their life forever, and fragmented their family. As of today, the only way these daughters can see their father is by traveling to the U.S.-Mexico border and crossing to Tijuana, because geographically, this is the closest, closest place where they're able to see their father. This is heartbreaking, this is a heartbreaking story. I cannot imagine ICE on school grounds and the repercussions this may cause to students and families. I urge you to please support Safe Haven Resolution, that will help to prevent the suffering of many children's family. Thank you.
Good evening, board, and staff, and community. I'm confused now, but I think you got it, Stephanie. Sorry, Ms. Anella. I think we're back to the original, if I, from my understanding of all the tallying and everything, so, I'm happy.
Sarah Savacul, Antioch High School. Thank you for sticking with the original. I think the word Safe Haven is really important, and as you mentioned, as you were debating it, all the documents looked at are from districts in the county that have already passed Safe Haven. I know a long time ago, Martinez passed it in January, and I was like, all right, Antioch, we can do this. And it'll be late May now, by the time we get our, so I'm glad it's happening, I wish it happened a little sooner. And I really like the wording Safe Haven, because it allows us as a county to stand together. By my count, which is not great, but all the teachers that I talk to when I do union business, looks like everybody in the county has passed Safe Haven language. If we stand together, we're a much stronger, there are a million people in Contra Costa County, we're a huge economic force. I, I don't think anyone's coming for us, I'm not scared to use the language, and I think as, if we all stand together and use it together, it sends a message to our students and our families, and I'm waiting to send that message to them, waiting. So thank you for keeping the language, and I'm excited about passing it next board meeting, it has to come back again, I understand. Okay, I'll be following too. Thanks so much.
Christine Clark, followed by Kenneth Kent.
Hi, good evening, board members. I am Christine Clark, a resident of Antioch and a concerned, I'm a concerned voter, I'm actually very excited to hear your speaking about and going with the first Safe Haven Resolution. I just wanted to say, I am also with People Power, which is a grassroots organization formed by the ACLU to defend civil liberties, and there have been many changes in the federal political landscape regarding immigration after the November election, and it is the responsibility of communities around the country to address the heightened levels of fear and uncertainty of undocumented residents. It's the right thing to do, and many undocumented residents are, are contributing members of society, many have children, undocumented or not, who will continue to reside here, receive an education, and grow up to help make America great. The, the Safe Havens Resolution is about informing both families and school officials of the legal rights to an education that are available to all students, whatever their or their parents' immigration status is. It articulates and reinforces policy regarding the relationship the school has with law enforcement, and in particular with ICE. Students should know that schools are not investing their immigration status, sorry, students should know that schools are not investigating their immigration status, and that ICE cannot enter schools without a warrant. Parents should also know that schools are a safe place to send their children, they should also know the rights and options available to them and their children if ICE should in fact initiate deportation. School officials should, also, school officials should be able to communicate policy clearly and effectively to students, to parents, and most importantly, to law enforcement. The political battle over immigration will be fought in Washington and in courts across the country, and Safe Haven policies will allow schools to focus on serving communities and educating children, rather than be act, being actual or perceived immigration authorities. Superintendent Tom Torleksen believes Sa- Safe Havens are a necessary resource to further the education goal, educational goals of school districts, and I hope you will agree, which I'm seeing that you're all pretty much for it, so, that's great, thank you.
Kenneth Kent, followed by Berlin Leon.
Good morning, Ken Kent, fifth grade teacher at Camille Elementary. First, I want to say I'm so proud of our students who came up here from the science project through Monterey Aquarium, that was wonderful, very happy to, that they had such a good time with that, and they learned a lot. Came in really confused about why this was crossed out in certain areas, and I'm glad that we finally came around to a certain piece, especially the idea of the concerns of potential ICE raids in our community and in the surrounding communities, I'm so glad that's back in. Most of what I have to say, I think, can go by the wayside, except for one part. This should just be treated as a beginning. This says a stand, saying, yeah, we're going to stand next to, we're going to try to make you feel safe, we're going to make sure you're included, but how? Where's the language that says we're going to have stronger, more frequent trainings for staff? Where are we going to provide resources for families and students about what they can do themselves and how to access their rights? These are important steps in a, in a school district that, hold on a second. Okay, good. If we can't stand up for each and every student, and I'm so glad we have re-included categories of students in our groups, you cannot teach in any class, in any room in this district or any district, and not have several students who, at that time, or in the future, will self-identify in a variety of these categories. And it's important that they know they are safe, even before they're able to put a label on how they're feeling and, and themselves. And taking those words out would have been a grave mistake. But please, take the time, pass this when it comes up, but don't let it stop here. Thank you.
Berlin Leon, followed by Melissa Albanas.
Joe, can you show page two?
Good evening again, my name is Berlin Leon. Now, I would like to speak in my primary language, so Delia is going to translate for me, thank you. So I, thank you for the minutes. Como se dijo anteriormente, soy miembro del comité de ILAC, miembro del comité de DILAC del distrito de Antioch, y también soy voluntaria del grupo regional del este del condado de Contra Costa.
As I was said previously, I am a member of the ILAC committee, a member of the DILAC committee at the Antioch School District. I am also a volunteer with the East County Regional Group of Contra Costa.
He notado que en el presente año escolar se han enfocado en la participación de los padres gracias a la intervención de dos excelentes personas como lo son la señora Ana Castro y la señora Silvia Ramírez, que están efectuando un excelente trabajo para el distrito. Motivo por el cual considero que es muy importante que el distrito pueda ofrecer un lugar seguro para que los padres puedan participar y colaborar en programas educativos tanto para ellos como para sus hijos.
I have noticed that in the present school year, there has been a focus on parent participation, thanks to the intervention of two excellent persons, Ms. Ana Castro and Ms. Silvia Ramírez, who are doing an outstanding job in the district. In light of this, I believe that it is very important that the district offers a safe and secure place, so that these parents are able to participate and collaborate in the educational programs offered to them and their children.
Hay muchos padres que se interesan en participar en la educación de sus hijos, pero debido a lo que está pasando y las amenazas de esta nueva presidencia en el país, es muy difícil que los padres se involucren en este tipo de programas que les ayudan a superarse y ayudar a sus hijos a que tengan éxito escolar.
There are many parents who are interested in participating in the education of their children, but due to the current situation and the threats made by the new president, it is very difficult for the parents to get involved in this type of program that will help them to better themselves and help their children to have success in school.
Se necesita un espacio seguro donde ellos y sus hijos tengan la confianza de poder llegar y obtener ayuda para desarrollarse intelectualmente y participar en cualquier actividad educativa para el beneficio de sus hijos.
We need a safe space where parents and their children can feel confident that they can come and receive help to develop intellectually and participate in any educational activity that will benefit their children.
Por estas razones y muchas más, es muy importante que ustedes aprueben una resolución Safe Heaven, para que estos padres y sus hijos puedan participar e ir a las escuelas sin temor.
For these and many other reasons, it is very important to approve the resolution for Safe Haven, so that these parents and their children are able to participate and attend the schools without fear.
Les agradecería mucho y suplicaría por favor votar sí en esta resolución.
I implore you, and would be most grateful if you would vote yes on this resolution.
Thank you.
Evelyn Lopez, followed by Concepcion James.
My name is Melissa Albanas, and I am a member of the East County Regional Group. I am an Antioch resident and attended Sutter Elementary, Park Middle School, and I am currently a student at Dear Valley High School. I, as an Antioch student, I urge you to pass this resolution on. I have been a witness of the fear that is going around immigrant children and other students. These kids fear that their, their families might be taken away from them and that they might never see them again. Making the Antioch School District a Safe Haven place would give them the security they need to feel. All kids deserve to feel safe and comfortable in school regardless of race, age, religion, gender, or sexual orientation. If you doubt whether you should If you doubt whether you should support the Safe Haven resolution or not when it is time to take action on it, please think about how you would feel if your children, grandchildren, nieces, or nephews felt uncomfortable or unsafe in school. Wouldn't you do anything to help your children feel safe? I don't think any child deserves to be afraid, and that is the reason why I am here tonight advocating for all children. You are responsible for these students during school hours. I really hope that you consider voting yes in supporting the Safe Haven Resolution for the Antioch School District. Thank you.
Evelyn Lopez, followed by Concepcion James.
Hello. First off, let me say how amazing your artwork is, probably because my sisters is up there herself. But, okay. So, hi. My name is Evelyn Lopez. I am a member of the East County Regional Group, and first of all, I want to thank you for considering passing a resolution that will help all children and families feel safe on school campuses. So, last meeting, there was some discussion about the title of the resolution itself, and I think after hearing, most of you are in agreement with the title Safe Haven, which I think is perfect because other school districts like Martinez, Concord, some in San Francisco, Sonoma, etc., are using it. I do not believe that the risks of becoming a Safe Haven School District are greater than the benefits. We strongly believe that the big benefit of them all is the safety and productivity of the students you were elected to protect. Last meeting, there was a concern expressed about the potential risk of losing federal funding for passing a Safe Haven Resolution. We too want our district to be physically responsible. However, it is an unfounded and flawed concern because school districts are not risk of losing federal funding for these policies. Not only is it unconstitutional, but it's never been stated that schools specifically would be targeted. You have a moral obligation and responsibility to protect all children in your school district. For this reason, I ask you to please adopt a meaningful Safe Haven Resolution reaffirming that the Antioch Unified School District values all children and will not allow ICE on school grounds without a valid warrant. This will help all students feel free and of fear, and Antioch families will thank you for it. Also, I want to leave you today with the quote by Tom Torleksen, the State Superintendent of Public Instruction, which also agrees with districts becoming Safe Havens. He states that our schools are not and will not become an arm of the U.S. Customs and Immigration Enforcement. Instead, they will remain safe places for learning and teaching for all students regardless of immigration status, and I hope you too, like, take advice from him. Thank you.
Right. Good evening. My name is Concepcion James, and I'm an Antioch resident and the proud parent of a graduate from Deer Valley High, who's now in RN with a bachelor's degree working in our county hospital. I also work for Contra Costa County Health Services, and I'm the health equity manager there. And I do want to applaud you for supporting the heart of the Safe Haven Resolution. You know, children are vulnerable members of our society, and they depend on us, the adults, to develop policies and resolutions that do protect them and help them feel safe. Let me say that the damage is already being done out there. When you have the media every day making, you know, the children are picking this up all the time, every single day, that they are different, that they are not as valuable, that their families are not as valued in our country right now. This is already damaging children psychologically. You're stepping up to say, "We want to help you. We want to protect you." This is so important. In the Health Services Department, we're seeing the same effect. We see fewer pregnant women coming in for care. We've had cancer patients who have said to us, "We're not going to come and get our cancer care because we're afraid we can be deported, and what difference will it make? I'm going to die anyway." We're also dealing with this in Health Services. So, it is important to say that it's safe because people need to feel safety right now. I'm glad you kept the bullying piece in here because last meeting, there were children and teachers who shared stories about children who are being bullied because they come from, because they are being actually profiled by other students because of who they, what they look like, or maybe because of their language. People come from all over the world to this country as immigrants, and undocumented immigrants come from countries all over the world, even places like Canada and European countries. It's just that in this country, we've said almost all people who are undocumented come from Mexico. That is not correct. That is not correct. People come from many countries, but unfortunately, people are being racially profiled, and if you look at what Texas recently did, they have the ability now to stop anyone on the streets and ask them to show their proof of who they are and if they have, if they're residents and citizens. You've stepped up to the plate. You said you're going to do something about this. I really applaud you for this, and I want to hold you all accountable. As the teacher who said, "This is just the first step. We need to do more," and I would be glad to share with you, and I know the advocates for children would be glad to share with you, resource, immigration resource list that we have, the parent preparedness plans in case families are separated from children. I'm glad to share with you any resources I have and to be of support to you and the Board. So, thank you very much.
Debra Polk, followed by Tanya Dean.
Good evening. It's nine o'clock. I know we're probably all a little tired, but I just have a few things I want to say. My name is Debra Polk, and I'm a member of the East County Regional Group and also a resident of Antioch. And I'm thrilled that the Board is demonstrating support of all families by developing a Safe Haven Resolution for Antioch students. I believe that we can all agree that our children are our number one priority and that their safety and security is critical to their success in school and life. I just have a few requests that I'd like to see incorporated into the resolution that you are considering passing. First of all, I would like to see you use the language Safe Haven as the title for the resolution. I would also like for you to state protocol for staff to follow in case ICE does show up. We do know that ICE did show up at a Pittsburgh school, so ICE will show up at a school, and they've done it. So, we also am pleased that you're including the language that addresses bullying and language that protects students regardless of gender and our sexual orientation. Passing a meaningful Safe Haven policy is critical to the mental, physical, and economic health of all Antioch families. I thank each and every one of you for your time and consideration of this critical resolution that will help all children be better prepared to thrive in Antioch schools. Thank you.
Tanya Dean, followed by Gloria Ochoa.
Hi, good evening. My name is Tanya Dean, and I am an Antioch resident and a member of the East County Regional Group. I'm a graduate of Antioch High School. I've lived here. I raised my child here. I entrusted my child with you when she was going to school. Now, she's an adult. I'm here tonight as an educator of young children who are going to go to your school, go to our school district, not yours, ours, it's part of my school district. And I just want the parents to feel safe, having their children in your care in the school. So, I urge you to pass a meaningful Safe Haven Resolution as soon as possible, and I encourage you to use the title Safe Haven as it promotes a sense of security. If you look up Safe Haven, it's a noun that means security, and that's the message that we need to give our parents and our children. I understand that about the ICE that you don't think they'll come to the schools, and I understand that, but we need to share this with the parents and let them understand what the protocols would be, what would happen if it happened, that their children are safe in our school. Like I said, during these uncertain times, I see firsthand the fear that these parents and these children, I deal with very young children, I see it's trauma that they go through. They're afraid that they might not see their parents. I also see the parents not wanting to drop their children off at school sometimes. We see a lot of absenteeism and stuff like that. So, it's really important that they feel this safety in our schools because if they're relaxed, they're able to learn. And if they're able to learn, then they're able to succeed once they come to kindergarten and so forth. So, we all have an obligation to help these children, our children, to feel safe, relaxed, knowing that they will be safe at school. I encourage you to keep the wording, to let the parents know that their children will be safe in school. So, please support the meaningful Safe Haven Resolution and help keep our parents, help keep our children to feel safe in our schools. Thank you.
Gloria Ochoa, followed by Griselda Rendon.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Gloria Ochoa. I'm a member of the East County Regional Group. I am here tonight to ask you to consider, please, passing the Safe Haven Resolution. As we have mentioned to you before, a lot of the kids that attend any school district are in fear of being separated from their parents due to the threat surrounding immigration. This is affecting our children mentally and emotionally. It is also affecting their school attendance because immigrant kids do not feel safe on school campuses and have not passed, in school campuses that have not passed a Safe Haven Resolution. They are afraid of going to these schools because they do not feel protected by school staff. By passing a Safe Haven Resolution, you will help all students that attend your school district feel safe again on school grounds. Trust will be rebuilt, and it will encourage kids to attend school regularly. Their parents will have the peace of mind. They deserve knowing that their kids will be safe from ICE, from ICE threats when they are in school. We urge the Antioch School Board to pass the Safe Haven Resolution tonight and to please use the Safe Haven term for this solution. We also want you to see language, we also want you to see language included that was specified, the protocol in ICE case shows up at Antioch schools. We ask you to provide a Safe Haven welcoming environment that promotes fairness and respect for all children. Thank you.
Griselda Rendon, followed by Rhea Foxton.
So, my name is Griselda Rendon, and I went to Mission, I went to Park, and I graduated from Antioch High School. So, I am against on ICE coming to school grounds to detain parents from their children. There are three points that I want to address. The first point is that it is inhumane and very sad for young children to experience separation from their family. This can create sadness, anger, and depression for them. The majority of the children's support system are their parents, and children depend on them to live for school motivation and for encouragement in life. Without their parents, children can enter in deep depression that can alter their school achievements, can fundamentally alter their brain, may want to drop out of school, which can lead the school districts to lose funding, and children may enter in a phase to engage in drugs or violence. The second point is that when parents register their children for school, they provide information that is very confidential. It is inappropriate for schools to give out confidential information to ICE in order to detain parents. ICE simply look for people who appear to be an immigrant, and that is not okay. There are immigrants that don't have a criminal record, and they are hardworking people trying to achieve the American dream, and give their children a quality life and send them to college. Just how some people see it as unfair for the immigrants to be here because they weren't born here, it is actually unfair for them to separate the children from their parents that have a clean record and are only trying to do good in our country. The third and final point is that this creates room for discrimination, prejudice, and bias for children. Children are like sponges and soak up information very quickly. Children learn that it is okay to discriminate children whose families are from other countries that don't look like them, isolate them, call them names, and make fun of them because of the color of their skin. Children will have a lack of respect towards one another, and there can be an increase in bullying. It is past due that we need to have schools celebrate diversity because that is what the United States of America is really all about. We have to unite ourselves and celebrate each other's differences and protect one another from separation and mental and physical harm. Do realize that children will most likely not be interested in school because they got separated from their parents, and that can hurt the school districts in many ways. Now, do you really want all of this for all of our children? Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Board members and staff. My name is Rhea. I'm with First Five Contra Costa, and in the spirit of not being too repetitive of what everyone else has said, I just want to thank you for your thoughtful consideration of the resolution before you tonight. We were here last meeting, and we returned tonight because this topic is of great importance to Antioch children and families. We're interested in having the most meaningful policy possible. So, meaningful in the sense that it serves to reassure all children and families that they're safe and that the district is truly being responsive to families' current lived reality and experiences. So, for these reasons, we do feel strongly about some of the clauses that have been discussed tonight. One is around the ICE clause. The clause, this clause really in essence is the heart of this proposal at this current moment. The threat of ICE in our community cannot be denied, and it's at the core of why students and families feel afraid. To exclude it would water down this proposal and send a dangerous message to families that the district either does not have a protocol for ICE or at best has an ambiguous one. So, including this clause is important to let families know what they can expect and to create the safe environment that this resolution seeks to achieve. I also would just like to reiterate that we do support including protections from bullying around gender identity or sexual orientation. Our intention is that this resolution serves all children and lets all students know that they're safe. We would not support a resolution that would support one group over the other. And then lastly, you've heard many before me discuss the title. It's our assessment that this policy is most meaningful with the Safe Haven title. The Safe Haven title already is a shift from the more desired and known concept in the community, which is sanctuary. So, we frankly just want to remind the Board that any federal funding threats have been found unconstitutional, and to continue to insist that the use of Safe Haven would make the district more vulnerable is in some ways to continue to give credence to an unfounded threat. So, we don't understand the need to change the title and feel it would only serve to water down the resolution. But overall, we appreciate your support. We know all of you are committed to keeping children safe. We thank you for your thoughtful consideration and hope that you will pass this once and for all next meeting. Thank you.
So, I did not hear any, it sounds like the speakers were in support of the direction that you've given thus far. I wasn't sure on one thing, which was the protocol for staff to respond to ICE. I heard that twice. I don't know if they, that's something...
But isn't this the policy, and then the action would be what you direct?
Yes, correct.
Okay. We don't typically have those details in a board policy.
Right.
You already have the procedures in place.
Okay.
Well, thank you all for coming and sharing. We appreciate it.
I just want to point out on page two that we do have up there some mechanisms like staff development. If you go where we looked at it earlier, if you scroll down some, and then we do have, I mean, well, it's up or down. I don't know what it is on there. And then we have ensuring there are adequate supports and resources for students who may feel unsafe both on and off campus as it relates to discrimination and bullying predicated on immigration status, race, ethnicity, etc. So, that's included in there on page two. What I really wanted to see was just a strong, I mean, we can go with this, fine, and if we want to vote this in tonight, I'm fine, but what I wanted to see was that as a district, we embrace diversity across all ethnicities. I didn't necessarily see that in there, which is why I was channeling the Mount Diablo Resolution where it's completely focused on students, families, the district community. All throughout the resolution, it is very strong, focused on students and everyone in the district community. So, I wasn't necessarily striking out anything that had to do with gender, gender identity, because obviously that is of grave concern, but I do want to make sure that it's in here, that it's in here meaningful, and that, you know, for families and language, culture, every asset that a family bring, that we're embracing that across all domains as a district, and I just wanted it to be strong. So, you know, if we were to, let's say, I know we had people that agree with the Safe Haven, and if we were to look at this and say, "Okay, let's go with this," with the intent that this is a working document, I would be fine with that.
So, I feel like I have enough direction from the Board to bring this back...
Next meeting.
To the next meeting. You comfortable? Okay. Thank you.
We've had a request for a five-minute break, so you're free to stay with us to the end or to go home and... the end or to go home and have some sleep. Resolution 20161731.
Classified employees provide a valuable service to the schools and students of the Antioch Unified School District by playing a vital role in providing for the welfare, safety, and nurturing of students through their years, and by assisting the district in providing a positive learning environment through their commitment to hard work and consistently exhibiting a high level of professionalism and good customer service. California has set aside the week in May, of May 21st through 27th, to recognize the invaluable contributions of our classified staff. So I would ask the board to adopt this resolution.
And I would move with pleasure.
We have a move by Gibson, trustee Gibson Gray. Second. Seconded by trustee Hack. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none?
To the classified in the back.
Well done. Well done.
A pastor but done.
Resolution 16 for a second reading and actions, none. Resolution, item number 17, board policies for first reading, we have none. 18, board policies for a second reading and action, we have a revised board policy, 9200, limits of board member authority. Will be addressing this?
I will be addressing it. So this, this particular policy, I think, has come back a number of times for first read, for input, and we're finally at the point where it has incorporated board directives and asking that you pass this this evening or approve, adopt.
Do I hear a motion?
Because I never want to hear it again.
Yes, we've been there before on this. Yes, we have a motion and we have a second. Do we have a second?
I guess I'm the second. I just, and to state for the record, I don't want to see it again.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
So we have no.
Motion carries.
[laughing]
We move then to item number 19, Contra Costa Community College District College and Career Access Pathways Dual Enrollment Partnership Agreements.
All right. So this is our, this is our MOU with Los Madanos in regard to dual enrollment. And we brought this to the board in, I believe, January, February as sort of a catch-up. So now we're, we're doing it on schedule and getting this in place for next year. And so this again is just information for anticipated future action.
At the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Side of question.
Yes, please.
Someone had asked me, do the, I haven't looked at it in detail, but someone from the community mentioned that there was a difference in the classes that the high schools were selecting. Is that true or is it equal access? I have to look at it in detail. For example, I think they thought Antioch High School was not taking any science classes or DeValle was taking different higher-level classes or something along that lines. And I wasn't able to respond. So do you note that to be?
Well, not in this, not in this particular case.
So they do have a choice, though, in what classes that students will take? And is it on, will they be along a pathway or are they just generic electives?
These are, these are basically, it depends on which one we're talking about because we have four different schools and there, and there are some different classes. But for example, they're, they're more aligned with, with career exploration, applying for colleges, where an instructor from LMC will come and teach those particular classes and then students get, get, get credit for, you know, LMC credit for taking that particular class. But if you send specific questions that you have about that, I'd be more than happy to get that information for the board.
I'll send community members to you guys.
Please.
Yeah, I think what she's referring to is Deer Valley had introductory to astronomy. And I didn't see that for Antioch High. And just my understanding, when you take courses in high school that's applicable or towards junior college or four-year university, they're not necessarily career path courses. So I'm trying to understand why one was introduction to astronomy instead of career paths.
Right. So astronomy, that is a, that's a science elective. And so, so again, at our sites, they do have different electives. Their, their core graduation requirements are the same, but with the different pathways at the particular schools, the electives are different. At some schools, some are similar and some are different.
Okay.
Yeah, Deer Valley does have the stargazing thing, don't they? So that's probably, yeah, I, you know, I just thought they were asking about something else and wondered why one school wasn't choosing something related to science. They thought it, I'll take a deeper look and send it to you guys.
Okay. I'd be more than happy to look into that.
Item number 20, information, general information, none. 21, future agenda items from board members. Anyone have something to offer on that?
I wanted to address summer school programs. It's my understanding that Jack London has Bright Beginnings and a teacher emailed me and wanted to know if other students, I mean, I'm sorry, other districts are offering summer school programs because we have students in Sycamore, what have you, and they can't afford to take the bus over to Jack London. So I was just wondering about the summer school programs.
Would you be comfortable including, we can include the list of, I think we have 30?
30, we have, yeah, 30 different summer school programs.
Different summer school programs. And we could perhaps give the board a listing of those programs with a description and where they're located. And you can follow up with any questions that the board might have.
Would this be at the next meeting?
We can put it in our Friday board. And then if you have questions leading up to that, we can certainly answer them and.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
So I wonder, did we address how community groups were going to use our schools for different things during this?
That's next week.
Okay, okay.
Yes, Mr. Collins.
Because the summer's coming and I know people aren't asking. Okay, got it.
That'll be the 24th. Good memory.
Yes. Not necessarily an agenda item per se, but just a future item here is that on calendaring for graduations, if you could get back to Secretary Bileci on your interest in attending either Antioch High School or Dozier-Libby graduation at the same time, Friday evening. So we presumably, I would think, would have, you know, three at one and two at the other, maybe three at Antioch High and two at Dozier-Libby. So if you could let me know your, your, me, your answer, your preference for either of those two, so we could kind of apportion them.
Dozier-Libby.
Dozier-Libby.
Which is at Deer Valley.
Yes.
I'll do Dozier.
Don't confuse us late.
Okay. So we have Gary and Deborah doing Dozier. And trustee Vincent and I should be having some discussions also regarding superintendent evaluation, which is one little thing at about this time of year.
Okay.
We also have to talk about somewhere along the way, middle school.
Oh, that's right, the middle school.
They're all having it in the same timeframe.
Oh, middle school.
I'm sorry.
I believe that the last meeting, the direction of the board was that trustee Vincent and President Rulug, sorry, Vice President Vincent, were going to reach out to the board and come up with the schedule, and we would let the schools know. So I don't know how you want to coordinate that.
We can work on that.
We can work on that.
Okay. Yeah. And then if you just let us know, we can make sure that wherever you're going, your names are announced. We will announce all names.
Okay.
I think it has, the Brown Act, I think it has to go through the secretary. I don't know.
I don't think it's a decision-making, so I think it is.
Yeah, but still, I'm not comfortable with emails and where we're going to be. I will send my availability to Nancy and you guys can figure it out.
Okay, if you want to do, yes.
That's fine. The high schools were, were the conflict in those two high schools.
And the times haven't changed because I know we had a couple of, okay, good.
Yeah.
We don't have any additional comments from the public. 22. Number 23, reports from board members, relative memberships to other organizations or district business. Anyone wishing to report on something?
I just need, at this time of the year, we're a whole lot of options to go to, you know, achievement awards and music programs and plays. So that's kind of cool that we get on sites and be able to see all that stuff and see the end of the year type of stuff, isn't it?
So I think that Park Middle School's sixth graders have done a tremendous job of improving their music skills. It was amazing to hear them play and all the parents in the back going, wow, because the music went from screechy in the beginning of the year to a nice tune. And parents, the room was packed and parents were just impressed and they couldn't stop talking. And really appreciated the awards given at Antioch High School. It's nice to see all the students that graduated from Antioch came back and gave scholarships to the students that, you know, the current students. So that's always really nice to see. And the other thing I forgot to talk about is Steve Glaser did an educator summit. Adam was there. And it was actually pretty gut-wrenching to listen to some of the stories from students that had been bullied and was being bullied from some of the surrounding schools based on, you know, their race and ethnicity. And I did get a, I did get a packet that I'm happy to give to Superintendent Anello for the, for the next board packet that identifies all the latest symbols of racism that they're using and what they mean. They seem to change every year into, you know, street language or something. And so it's always good to get, you know, to have that information handy. The other thing that I'm really, really excited about is for the past few years, I've given backpacks even before I was on the board into the student support services and a lot of individual community groups are students. So last week, Turner students received 50 backpacks from a volunteer agency, and I will send out an email to let you all know that backpacks will go to Marsh and they will also go to Orchard Park students.
From what agency?
I didn't put the agency out yet. I need permission. But it's a, it's a donor that is giving the backpacks. And one is Volunteers, I think it's Volunteers of America. I put our high schools on the list. I had a request for high school backpacks and I've already placed them on the list early. So I'm excited about that. But our students are slated to receive in the district 250 backpacks.
So the schools that got the backpacks, they don't know who gave them, Joan? It's a secret?
They have, the woman, one of the volunteers was there. So I don't know if she, one of the donors was there. So I don't know if she actually, she may have given her name to the principal. But I think, you know, you can identify the backpacks. I think on the backpacks is the, they're not identifying who the donor is, but on the backpack is Sidney Page. And so I think that's an amazing thing. And they have another program where they're identifying schools all over the Bay Area, where one school buy backpacks, another school will receive the backpacks for free. So for every backpack that's purchased, they're identifying schools all over the Bay Area for students to receive a backpack free. And parents were very excited about that.
And who was on the backpack again?
Sidney Page.
What is that?
The name of the, what do you call that? That's the name of the backpack group. But that's not the donor. Have you heard of Sidney Page?
No.
I think it's just a name, but that has nothing to do with the donor. And so I think it's good that we've been identified as such. And there are many different agencies that will start gearing up and giving out backpacks. And so they know that oh, close to 70% of our students are high needs and families are very excited about receiving the backpacks. So I'll let you all know when they're coming. I know the children are very happy because halfway through the year, their backpacks break and wear out and parents can't afford to replace them. The average cost of a backpack is anywhere from $45 to $60, depending on the quality of the backpack. So if you have three or four children, it can be very expensive to replace them. And these backpacks came with supplies, so that was an extra bonus.
Great. Several of us were able to attend the annual prayer breakfast. They had about 300 people there. That was a very nice event. And I was invited by Tom McNell to go over to Heritage High to see their JOPC program, Air Force cadets, very inspiring kids, seemed to really enjoy that program. I think he had some conversation with Ken Gardner about the possibilities of Deer Valley. And something you mentioned earlier, the baccalaureate, just a reminder, we know how busy this time of year is. June the 4th, Sunday, Holy Rosary Church, A Street, at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 7:00 PM. So that should be a nice event. Anybody else have anything to add? If not, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Future meetings.
Future meetings?
Future meetings, I'm sorry. Future meetings are, is it the 24th?
Yes.
Yes. Next one is 24th, then June 14th, and 28th. Thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
We have a definite yes. They've decided yes. Do we have a decided second?
Second.
Okay. Anybody object? I didn't think so. Okay. Meeting is adjourned. See you next time. Thanks for staying with us.